...regular meeting to order, would everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hutchings? Present. Ruffridge?
Present.
Nelson?
Mr. Nelson has an excused absence for this meeting.
Mr. Carey? Mr. Chilson?
Present.
Ms. Parker?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. May I have a motion to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Approve the adoption of the Agenda and the Consent Agenda.
I may have a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Are there any changes to the Agenda or Consent Agenda? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. There will be a request to add lay down resolution 2022-055 to the agenda.
Are there any objections to adding resolution 2022-055 to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, it is added to the agenda. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. I would also request to add lay down resolution 2022-056 to the agenda and to the Consent Agenda.
Are there any objections to adding resolution 2022-056 to the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing none, they are so added to the agenda. Vice Mayor Parker?
I would request to add lay down Action Memo 2022-028 to the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
Are there any objections to adding Action Memo 2022-028 to the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Seeing, hearing, seeing and hearing none, Action Memo 2022-028 is added to the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank you. I would also ask to request to add lay down Action Memo 2022-029 to the agenda.
Are there any objections to adding Action Memo 2022-029 to the agenda? Seeing, hearing, seeing and hearing none, that is added to the Action Memo 2022-029 is added to the agenda. Vice, or, excuse me, Ms. Hutchings?
I would like to add to the agenda. Lay down resolution 2022-057 declaring a local economic disaster for 2021 and 2022, and requesting the governor of the state of Alaska declare an economic disaster for 2021 and 2022 for the Upper Cook Inlet Eastside SetNet Fisheries and supporting a recovery plan. Add to the agenda, please.
Are there any objections to adding resolution 2022-057 to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, resolution 2022-057 is added to the agenda. Would the clerk please read the Consent Agenda?
November 30th, 2022 council meeting minutes. Ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2022-036, increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $32,000 in the general fund for changes to the authorized personnel staffing table for fiscal year 2023, introduced by city manager. Public hearing is to be held on December 28th. Ordinance 2022-37, accepting grant funds from the State Council on the Arts, Community Arts Partnership Grant and increasing estimated revenues and appropriations by $20,000 in the Parks and Recations Capital Project Fund for the development of an arts and cultural master plan, introduced by the city manager. Public hearing on December 28th. Resolution 2022-052, adopting an alternate allocation method for the FY23 Shared Fisheries Business Tax Program and certifying that this allocation method fairly represents the distribution of significant effects of fisheries business activity in FMA 14 Cook Inlet area, introduced by the city manager. Resolution 2022-053, certifying the results of the December 6, 2022 City of Soldatna employee election, brought to you by the city clerk. Resolution 2022-054, authorizing the purchase of calcium chloride dust control chemical for $32,640 from North Star Supply LLC, introduced by the city manager. Resolution, lay down resolution 2022-056, amending the city manager job description, introduced by Mayor and Parker. Action Memorandum 2022-026, mayoral appointment to advisory boards and commissions. Airport Commission, Charlene Totfass, Seat A, term to expire 12/31/2025. James Stinga, Seat B, term to expire 12/31/2025. Library Advisory Board, William Howell, Seat A, term to expire 12/31/2025. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Connie Hawker, Seat D, term to expire 12/31/2025. Leona Oberz, Seat G, term to expire 12/31/2025. Planning and Zoning Commission, Sonia Barba- Barbaza, Seat A, term to expire 12/31/2025. Thomas Anderson, Seat D, term to expire 12/31/2025. Action Memorandum 2022-027, requesting, request for an excused absence from the December 14, 2022 regular city council meeting, Mr., from Councilmember Nelson. Action Memorandum 2028-028, 2022 through 2023 city manager recruitment, and that was introduced by the human resources manager. And for clarification, Councilmember Hutchings, did you intend to add the local economic disaster of resolution 2022-057 to the consent agenda or just the main agenda?
The consent agenda.
Okay, let me read that into the record. Resolution 2022-057, declaring a local economic disaster for 2021 and 2022, and requesting the governor of the state of Alaska declare an economic disaster for 2021 and 2022 for the Upper Cook Inlet Eastside SetNet Fisheries and supporting a recovery plan, introduced by Councilmember Hutchings and Councilmember Chilson. That is your consent agenda.
Are there any public comments on any of the items just read by the clerk? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to speak on any of the items that were just read by the city clerk? Seeing none, I...
Did that include 029? I didn't hear the clerk mention, mention resolution 029 on declaring the vacancy.
That was ju, if I might, that when we added it, it was just added to the agenda? That was the motion for that it be added to the agenda, not to the consent agenda.
Declaring the vacancy in the city council? That's part of the regular agenda.
Thank you.
Seeing no one here in the audience, I see one hand raised for Lisa Gabriel. Ms. Gabriel? Please state your name and, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Lisa Gabriel. I live at 2305 Water Gateway, Kenai, Alaska, 99611. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Again, my name is Lisa Gabriel. I live in Kenai, Alaska. I'm a director for the Kenai Peninsula Fisherman's Association, who I, who I am actually representing tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on resolution 2022-057. The Kenai Peninsula Fisherman's Association has been a commercial fishing advocacy group since 1954, primarily comprised of SetNet Salmon Limited Entry Permit holders. Some 440 limited permit holders, each small business person's fish for salmon in this area and are primarily residents. Eighty-six percent are Alaskans, eighty percent are Central Peninsula residents. In 2018 and 2020, disasters were declared and funded for the Eastside SetNet Fisheries. We are currently waiting for spend plans that are being developed by the Alaska Department of Fish and Game before those disaster funds will be dispersed to our fishermen. In 2021, the Eastside SetNet Fisheries experienced a 63% loss, and in 2022, they experienced a devastating 90% loss. For the past five years have been disasters for the Eastside SetNet Fisheries family businesses. We appreciate your support for previous disaster requests and appreciate your help in starting the process for the 2021 and 2022 requests. We will be reaching out to Governor Dunleavy to do the deep dive into the disasters and will include a copy of this resolution if it's approved tonight. Hopefully, he will reach out, reach a conclusion of disaster and forward the request to the United States Department of Commerce Secretary Ramondo and then on to NOAA for their review. If approved by all, it will be sent to our federal delegation to procure funding. In the past several years, it's been a very difficult situation for our fishery or sockeye. The target species for the Eastside SetNet Fisheries are healthy, but other species which are not in good health create a hard line where we stop fishing and providing for our families. I'd like to thank Councilmember Hutchings and Councilmember Chilson for bringing the resolution 22-0757 forward and the rest of the council members for their consideration. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Gabriel? Seeing none, thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any of the Consent Agenda items? Seeing no one? Having no one else wishing to speak, the approved Agenda and Consent Agenda is back before the council. Are there any council objections to approving the Agenda and Consent Agenda? Saying none, the Agenda and Consent Agenda are approved by unanimous consent. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is presentation with prior notice, and that will be by the Inlet Keepers Community Action Studio Local Solutions Camp, and it'll be presented by Caitlin Badla.
Actually, no. I'm just the backup dancer.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna be presented by these two young women. We just wanna give you some holiday cheer. We may have come earlier this afternoon and learned how local government works and tested out your chairs and make sure your gavel works and stuff. Bringing your slides up one.
All right. Hello, and thanks for letting us present to you tonight. I'm Sarah Anselser. I live at 37520 Aloft Street in Soldatna.
I'm Bryn Haglund, and I live at 48420 Moose Run Avenue in Soldatna.
We are volunteers with the Cook Inlet Keeper Youth Program. Last year, we participated in a local solutions pilot summer camp that explored different solutions to climate change and to implement in the community to improve the environment, build the economy, and make life better for people who live here. Our main purpose tonight is to give you a little solutions-related Christmas present. But in order for that to make sense, we wanted to give you a little context first. First, a little bit about the local solutions camp. It was a three-day intensive for young adults at Cook Inlet Keepers Community Action Studio. There are lots of great camps for young kids, but there isn't actually a lot for teenagers. And so, my mother and I had the idea for the camp and designed it based on what we thought local teenagers would like. The mission of the camp was for Cook Inlet Keeper to help empower young people and to teach us about things we could do in our own homes and communities to help with problems concerning our beautiful Cook Inlet. We wanted the camp to be created in the same spirit of the Community Action Studio, where people feel welcome and all passions are respected and put to good use. On day one of the camp, we learned about Inlet Keepers' local salmon stream science and changes in stream temperatures and different ways to prevent environmental problems. Then we did an art as advocacy activity. First, we looked at a bunch of global solutions in a really cool book called Regeneration. And then we thought about which ones we'd like to see in our community. We then each painted something that represented some sort of local solution to climate change. We had examples of local bicycle racks, carpooling apps, inspiring futuristic fiction writing, and pretty much everything in between. Day two of the camp included talking about the importance of our food from source to table. We learned a lot from David, who coordinates Inlet Keepers Food Hub. We did a little cooking with local ingredients, and it turned out great. We learned about local farms. We ended the day by touring around the neighborhood to look at houses with solar panels that Inlet Keeper helped install through their Solarize program, the first local solution they implemented three years ago. On day two, we learned a bit about plant-based cooking and even made a seven-layer bean dip with salsa made with rhubarb and more local produce. It tasted pretty good, and everyone had a job to do.
On day three of the camp, we visited the Diamond Dem Ranch where the community compost solution is located. The motto of this, that solution is "Feed chickens, not landfills," and that's what we did. We also fed goats and cows. It was really fun to see a working farm. We learned that the way of, the way a farm operates impacts water quality. It was really cool to see a farm working to do it right. My favorite part of the local solutions camp was the art and the food. What I liked most about it was that it wasn't anything like school. We could paint our own ideas of what we wanted to see in the community, and we weren't limited by a topic. With the art project, we didn't have to change how we did anything. The camp only taught us to increase our art skills in a way that we enjoyed. Inlet Keepers' local solution this year is Project Retree, which is led by a group of volunteers who are passionate about improving our community, economy, and climate. We are always looking for more volunteers who are willing to do this important work, and we invite everyone. So many of our trees have been killed by spruce beetles in the last couple of years that the mission of this project is to restore and enhance tree cover in our neighborhoods and public places.
Retree, got it.
Our goal is to plant 5,000 trees in the Central Peninsula by next October. You can be a part of the solution too. If you want to support local solutions, come to the next Stratch Tree G meeting Tuesday, January 17. As a small thank you for all the work you do to implement solutions throughout the city and the region, we want to give you a present. Ms. Peggy gave each of us a copy of this book for the camp, and it's really cool and beautiful. And we wanted to give you a copy. Check it out over the holidays and share it with friends and family who like to think about real ways to make the better world a better place. If you want to connect with Inlet Keeper and get involved in local solutions, swing by their Community Action Studio over by the Mattress Ranch or email David or Caitlin. And if you do want to donate, donate, please do. The camp and local solutions work can't happen without support from the community. Your help is so instrumental in keeping our water clean and cold, our salmon, salmon healthy, and our air fresh. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any council comments or questions? Mr. Chilson?
Thank you. Wow, I would just say, when I was growing up, I wasn't at all exposed to education about environmental issues. It wasn't really something that I learned about in depth until I later became an adult. And today, it's one of the, the environment is a very important part of my family's life and making lifestyle choices around that. So I'm just excited to see that this is something that this organization is doing to make available today. Just on a personal note, one of the things I've struggled with in working with this is, you know, you see all these reports coming out of all the just massively consequential negative impacts we're seeing to the environment. And it's, it is difficult at times to maintain hope and continue to make the effort to try to make change in your community, and this is tremendously inspiring. I'd love that you guys have the passion to get out there and learn more and try to make positive change, and that shows a spark, and it is really inspiring. And please don't lose that hope because you are the change that is going to see this corrected in the future. So, thank you. Don't lose that.
Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As an ex-teacher, I should very much encourage young people to get involved. And I just want to mention to you, part of continuing to do the work that you're doing, I happen to know this place is vacant. We need people to apply for it. I heard a number of you mentioned that you live in this city. It would be awesome to see a, and everyone here is wonderful. I appreciate all of you very much. It'd be nice to see some young blood and some additional perspective. Thank you.
Any other comments? I do have one. The city is looking into purchasing trees that can be replanted around the community to take up some of the vacancies caused by all the spruce bark beetle kill. So, keep in touch with the city administration on that, and hopefully they'll have some trees, maybe not 5,000 of them, but hopefully have something that we can get back into the ground. And thank you again. Going, oh, Ms. Hutchings?
Well, the question I have, you're talking about 5,000 trees. How much money is that gonna take? Speechless.
I can help answer. I can help answer that. Because I'm the regional director for Cook Inlet Keeper, and I feel like Miss Moneybags is my job. We're a nonprofit, so we're not gonna buy all of them. We are working with the community to raise funds for 2,000 seedlings. It's about a dollar a seedling. And, but then the other, we're gonna get creative. There are so many trees in treesments, if you will, at the, in ditches, in utility corridors. And if those trees get dug up and replanted, Forester Mitch Michaud is going to do a little how to turn your backyard into a nursery. If you give those trees a little water and fertilizer for the first three months of summer, then you can plant them, and they have a much better fighting chance. And so we can actually repurpose trees that would otherwise get mowed over in, you know, an HEA utility easement or in a ditch, and then have those trees get a little bigger and more beautiful and planted perhaps in a yard of somebody in Soldatna who maybe couldn't plant their own tree. Actually, we're gonna go around this summer as a part of this summer's camp and go door to door in, in town and see if we can find folks who maybe are too old to dig a big hole in their yard, but who've lost their trees. And these young strapping ladies are going to hopefully find some folks who need, who need trees planted in their yards. And so that's just one of the creative ways we're hoping to re-tree with this project.
Thank you.
But if you wanna help, we do need money for some things.
Anything else from the council? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next agenda item is public comments and presentations. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. I will remind everyone to please be courteous and respectful during your comments. For those of you in attendance, I request you refrain from public applauding, cheering, whistling, clapping, or boisterous behavior during the public comment. Please be respectful of the views of the speaker, even if you do not agree with him. Please observe proper decorum and do not, and not engage in personal attacks or disruptive behavior. Sir, I believe you had something to add, and please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's David Hague, and thanks for this opportunity. I've lived about 30 years out on Browns Lake, up front of River Road, but I have lived in Soldatna at different points in time. I'm here to talk about something that's incredibly serious that we all need to know about. Grand juries in the state of Alaska are constitutionally authorized to investigate and indict and make reports on corruption in, in government. We found out that that has been being suspended by government officials. A number of entities passed resolutions to get that off the ground. Borough Assembly never came here, but the Homer City Council, Kenai City Council all passed resolutions unanimously asking grand juries to be let go forward. That resulted in a Kenai grand jury being convened. It's been going on for, the investigation's been going on for over seven months. One of the main things they're looking into is evidence that Alaska's only judge investigator for 33 years has been falsifying judge investigations to exonerate judges so that they can stay on the bench, when in fact, they should have been removed. Why I'm here, I should have been here a long time ago. As I said, this grand jury, about a week ago, or actually a little more than a week ago, issued a whole bunch more subpoenas, including this judge investigator. Immediately afterward, the Alaska Supreme Court came out with a rule change basically stripping the grand jury of their power to investigate and do anything about this judge investigator. It's incredibly serious. It's written into our constitution, the, that the grand juries have the power to investigate and make recommendations. The delegates also said that includes the power of, and I'm quoting from the delegates, "The power of grand juries to inquire into the willful misconduct in office of public officers and to find indictments in connection therewith shall never be suspended." The Alaska Supreme Court says grand juries can no longer indict grand juries that are investigating. They, it seems like they're trying to, to keep this under wraps, and it is incredibly serious. I have some documents I'd like to give you. I really don't know what you can do directly, but it's gonna take public awareness and all of us kind of working together. My state representative, not gonna name his name, but you'll probably figure out who it is. When he found out about this Supreme Court order, he tried getting a hold, well, he did get a hold of the Attorney General. He's planning on having a meeting with the governor. But he says that they probably can't do much, so it's gonna be we, the people. So, anyway, I have some stuff I'd like to give you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, if you have any documents, just please get them to the city clerk, and she can get them into the record.
Okay, and, yeah, I will, I'm actually gonna give you one packet that I gave. The grand jury subpoenaed me. I'm gonna give you much of what this, the grand jury actually has, so, anyway, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Sir, please step forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, thanks for the opportunity. Larry Opperman, 405 Endicott, Soldatna. I just wanted to, I came to this meeting not actually planning to make a public comment, but I felt I needed to on a couple of issues. One of them is to thank Justin Ruffridge for the wonderful job he's done for the city and wish him the best of luck down in Juneau, representing all of us in District Seven. The second thing I wanted to say is a thank you to our city and state snow removal crews. They have had a heck of a time here lately. I personally think they've, I've got experience with snow removal in a city, and I think they've done a wonderful job for us. And I just want to express to everyone, I hope they express some patience while they're on the road and care. But I just wanted to thank our snow removal guys and tell them what a good job they're doing. And that's all I've gotta say. Thank you much.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, thank you very much. Sir? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is John Watson.
My name is John Watson. I live at 40430 Foster Avenue, and I pastor Peninsula Christian Center here in town. I'm a little late to the party as far as dealing with some issues that happened over the summer. But I submitted a letter to you guys, or it was to Stephanie yesterday, and y'all should have got an email and a copy of it. And I just want to draw your attention to that letter briefly. And with the support of, you know, well over a dozen area pastors, we just want to promote and encourage the city council to build policy for our public parks that promotes traditional family values. You have the letter. You know what we stand for. The other part of this letter, I want to draw your attention to as you would, you might look through the list of that churches and begin to try to estimate the size of those churches. But I want to draw your attention to the fact that the impact and the outreach, or the impact of every church and every pastor goes far beyond its four walls and the number of people inside its buildings every Sunday morning. What you have in your hands or in that email represents thousands, not hundreds, but thousands of people in this community that want traditional family values promoted in our public parks and spaces. We understand that everybody has rights. I understand that. But when it comes to our public spaces, there also needs to be, there needs to be protections. There needs to be some safeguards put into place so that we don't have a fiasco like what we had this summer. And there's some policies that could be put into place that would make everybody happy, you know. But we don't want to see, as speaking on behalf of many, many pastors in this community, we don't want to see what happened this summer happen again. And I don't think you do either after all the public outcry that happened. I don't envy your position. I know it's a difficult spot when you have two juxtaposed positions that want two very different things. But just know that this letter represents thousands of peoples that truly want traditional family values promoted. And hopefully, you will hear this letter and receive it, and when you build your policies, you'll keep this in mind. Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none. Thank you very much for your comments. Ma'am? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Well, I won't need three, but my name is Queen Parker, and I live in Sterling. I just wanted to say the same, there would be a lot more people here tonight if it wasn't for the snow. We, the people, really need a grand jury to investigate. And I'm so along with David Hague. This is just a travesty. It's been going on for 30 years. And we all should be responsible for our positions. And those that are in authority should be watching out for the people, and that's what they were voted in for. And so, I just wanted to just go along with them and agree with, because there's a lot of us thinking that that are out here, and a lot of people have been really hurt. And it's really sad. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Thank you again. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any item not appearing on the agenda? Seeing none. Looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised. So, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, number six, Assembly and Legislative Reports. Are there any representatives from the borough or the state in attendance who would like to speak? And looking in the audience, I see no one from the borough or the assembly, or Borough Assembly or State Legislature, and I see none with hands raised. I do see one that will soon be making comments to us, but that'll be another month or so away. And we'll move on to the next items. Public hearings. Testimony limited to three minutes per speaker. Under new business, I'm looking at this, and it looks like everything, oh, resolution, Resolution 2022-050, reclassifying one regular part-time library clerk one position range four to a regular full-time library clerk two position range seven, and amending the fiscal year 23 authorized staffing table to reflect the change introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the adoption of Resolution 2022-050, reclassifying the one-time, the one regular part-time library clerk one position range four to a regular full-time library clerk two position range seven.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Hutchings. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. This request, of which I'm supportive of, came from a conversation I had with library director Rachel Nash. We have two existing clerk positions, and what we're asking for the council to do is reclassify one of those positions and increase it from a part-time position to a full-time position. That would allow us to advertise in-house among one of our existing employees, but then put them in a, get them some more hours, and then put them in a higher-level position, which Ms. Nash feels is more appropriate to the needs of the department. And I'm happy to answer questions, but I think the position would focus more on programming and organizing. We've had some very successful events, both put on by our own staff and in coordination with community members who come and host events there. And the thinking is, is that this position would somewhat spearhead some of the programming, and it's a little bit higher level. There is a budgetary impact. There's a companion ordinance that was introduced tonight that if approved, we would be asking the council to appropriate $32,000, which is the increase needed for this fiscal year. So, the true annual impact of making the change is a $64,000 change. That's not salary increase. That's largely because full-time employees are afforded benefits like health insurance, whereas currently, our part-time employees do not take advantage of that. So, that is the true, the full fiscal impact. I'd be happy to answer questions, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution Seeing no one. Looking at Zoom, I see no hands raised there. So, having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Mr. Carey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, the library board had a work session talking about what their plans were and what the needs were for the next few years. It was wonderful. I'll, just in a very short way, I'll mention that in my report from that. But I just want to say that there are so many opportunities of services that we can provide through the library. The library is so much more than books and cyber and all those other things, the social processes. And so, I just want to say, this is wonderful. One of the things we consistently found as we talked about different things was a need for more employees. And so, again, this is a very good step. This person, in terms of working, in terms of what future programs hopefully will be devised, and I hope in the future, as we move forward, we'll be talking about more positions at the library. The one restriction right now is space.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Any other comments? Seeing none. Call for the vote.
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-050 passes with five zero with one abstention, excuse me, one absence. Moving on to the next item is Resolution 2022-051, approving the use of $220,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funding for fieldhouse final design and bid phase work introduced by the city manager. May I have a motion to adopt?
I would move to adopt Resolution 2022-051.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Carey. Report from the administration.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I'll ask Public Works Director Kyle Cornelius to give our report.
Thank you. This resolution would approve the use of up to 220,000 in American Rescue Plan Act funding for the use towards the fieldhouse final design and bid phase work. Council previously appropriated about 1.1 million in ARPA funding through a couple of ordinances. The fieldhouse expenditures are an eligible expense for this grant program. To date, we've incurred only $70,000 by purchase order, which was approved by council through a resolution in April, authorizing the use of up to $150,000. But to date, we've only spent about $4,000 of the ARPA grant funds. The scope of work would include the completion of the fieldhouse design. The bulk of it is already designed. It's at a 95% level. So, this would be going from 95% to 100%. It also incorporates a little bit of a fairly new design of the connecting piece to the existing sports complex to act as a pre-function and entry to the new fieldhouse. We also want to make sure that we future-proof that area and avoid redundant costs if and when we were to expand the conference rooms. So, we want to make sure that when we build, what we build, we don't have to undo in the future. We're also going to conduct some engineering and traffic and parking efforts related to moving the building to accommodate that pre-function area. The consultant will assist with FFNE and flooring selection. As a reminder, we're going to, we anticipate having a multi-function building with removable flooring systems to include artificial turf, a sport court, and concrete. The final task is to produce bid-ready documents and then to assist in the bidding phase. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on Resolution Looking at the attendees, then the Zoom, I see no hands raised there. So, having no one wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments? Seeing none. Call for the vote, please.
Yes.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Ruffridge?
Yes.
You have five yes votes.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-051 passes on a five-zero vote with one absence. Moving on to the next item is the Lay Down Resolution 2022-055, commending City of Soldatna Council Member Justin Ruffridge for the service to the city of Soldatna. And I will read this. Whereas Justin Ruffridge has been a resident of the Kenai-Soldatna area since 1994 and active in community service since 2008, and whereas Mr. Ruffridge has been performing with the Kenai performers for over a decade, where he is a show, where he showcases his skills as a singer and actor. And whereas Mr. Ruffridge is an owner of the Soldatna Professional Pharmacy, along with two other pharmacies in Alaska, and a member of the Alaska Board of Pharmacy. And whereas Mr. Ruffridge served on the Soldatna Planning and Zoning Commission from 2017 to 2018. And whereas in 2018, Mr. Ruffridge was appointed to the Soldatna City Council, seat F. He was elected to the same seat in the 2018 regular municipal election and re-elected in 2020. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, Mr. Ruffridge was instrumental in filling the gap in local health care to provide vaccinations to Soldatna residents and others throughout the Kenai Peninsula. And whereas Mr. Ruffridge worked diligently to educate the community with science-based information through the pandemic. And whereas Mr. Ruffridge was named the 2021 Person of the Year by the Soldatna Chamber of Commerce for his health care leadership during the pandemic, as well as his extensive involvement in public service throughout the community. And whereas Mr. Ruffridge, along with Councilmember Jordan Chilson, were instrumental in initiating the work to develop a Soldatna Arts and Cultural, Culture Master Plan. And whereas the state of Alaska 2022 general election, Mr. Ruffridge was elected to the state of Alaska House of Representatives, District Seven. Whereas the Soldatna City Council commends Mr. Ruffridge on helping to shape our community, can congratulate him on his election to the House of Representatives. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council, the city of Soldatna, Alaska, that Councilmember Justin Ruffridge is commended for his years of dedicated service to the city of Kenai. What did I say? Slap my face on that one. I was jumping ahead here. Dedicated service to the city of Soldatna, Kenai Peninsula, and state of Alaska. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its adoption, adopted by the city council this 14th day of December 2022. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-055?
I would move to adopt Resolution 2022-055, commending Soldatna City Councilmember Justin Ruffridge, who represents the city of Soldatna and will soon represent the city of Soldatna and the city of Kenai.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilson. Where are we at here? Oh, yeah. Conflict of interest exists for Councilmember Ruffridge, and he will abstain from speaking to or voting on the resolution. I think he's at a meeting in Kenai right now. Report, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Caitlin Bodla, Klam Gulch.
Bryn Haglund, Kay Beach, Soldatna.
And Bryn has been in two plays with Justin, so she knows a little bit about his character. And we just wanted to say that we hope you perform as well in the legislature as you did in those plays. Thank you for serving the public.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on Resolution 2022-055? Seeing none. Looking at Zoom, and I see no hands raised there. Having no one else wishing to speak, the item is back before the council. Are there any council comments?
I would offer comment.
Go ahead.
It's been a pleasure, Councilmember Ruffridge, Representative-elect Ruffridge, to serve with you on the city council, and I look forward to working with you in the years ahead as you represent not only our communities, but the state of Alaska. So, thank you for your dedication and commitment.
Any other comments? I do have one. It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you, Mr. Ruffridge. I've enjoyed these years. I hope you have too. And I think you're going to be, you are a great asset to the city of Soldatna, and I expect you will be a great asset once you get down to Juneau. Having said that, I did have a small gift for you, but seeing that you were unable to make this meeting tonight, I had put together two boxes of books for you, because I know you'll have so much spare time down in Juneau, and you won't be, you know, sitting around your office. You'll have an opportunity to catch up on some reading. So, good luck to you. We'll miss you. Please keep in touch. We'll come down to see you once in a while down there in Juneau. And thank you again for what you've done for our community. It's been an honor. Mr. Carey.
Thank you. Justin, don't do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chilson.
Thank you. I was going to add my comments at the end of the meeting, but I guess I'll jump in now. I just want to say, it's been a pleasure working with you these last couple of years. It's always been enjoyable to approach an issue and be able to brainstorm with you and come out with new solutions I hadn't even considered. So, very much going to miss that and wish you the best. I know that you'll represent us very well down in Juneau and look forward to seeing you down there in office. So, thank you for all your work.
Ms. Hutchings.
Well, Justin, I know you're going to do a great job. You made lots of connections at AML, and you were just buzzing around like a little bee. So, have a great time. Enjoy it.
Call for the vote, please.
Chilson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey? You have four yes votes.
Resolution 2022-055 passed unanimously on a five-zero vote with one absence. There again, thank you very much, Mr. Ruffridge. Moving on to the next resolution, I'm going to have to ask, is 22056, was that on the consent? I'm actually going to pull that off, and let's bring it up to discuss the lay-down resolution. 2022-056, amending the city manager job description. May I have a motion to adopt?
Didn't it already pass on the consents?
I know, but I think, I think we need to discuss this.
Okay.
Okay. So, I may have a motion to adopt.
Would it be a motion to discuss, or I'm confused, because I think it's already passed?
passed?
So it would be a motion to remove it from the consent agenda?
It's already passed the agenda, though.
I know.
So I, is there a?
Can we bring this up then, under?
So you guys, under Roberts, I'm not positive, but I would imagine that it's a motion to reconsider an item from the consent agenda, or reconsider the vote on the, on the consent agenda action. So you could move to reconsider the vote on the consent agenda, and then remove that item.
I guess my question would be, if you don't anticipate any action, my, my question would be, is if you don't anticipate any action or change in our, in our adoption of this earlier, could we just discuss it without actually making any change? Okay.
So, where are we at?
You're gonna just.
Okay. Going to that resolution, and I've got too much paperwork here. I hope everyone had the opportunity to take a look at the revisions that were made to the city manager's job description. There's some changes to modernize the terminology in it and to bring it more current with the actual job that's being conducted now. So if there's any questions from anyone on the council, this would be the time to bring those up.
I guess my question would be, I think this might have been an email earlier, but just a refresher for my own lack of memory on this. Do we have an executive session on this coming up soon to discuss the hiring process? Okay.
Adjusted, like I said, adjusted, minor changes and clarifications and modernization of the city manager's job description that will be going out when we start advertising for the position.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Parker?
Yes, one of the, the changes that we did make is originally, you could substitute degree with 10 years of progressive experience, and we changed that 10 years to 15 years of experience. And here later on in the agenda, we will be discussing the hiring process because that was not removed, added to the consent agenda. So that will be discussed.
Any other comments or questions? Did you want to make any, Ms. Queen? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda then. Let's see, which one is that? We're moving on. The Action Memorandum 2022-028, 2022-2023 City Manager Recruitment, that has also, was on the consent agenda, and we may discuss that a little bit later on. And then, the next item is the Lay Down Action Memorandum 2022-029, declaring a vacancy on the City Council's seat. May I have a motion to approve? Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the motion to approve the Action Memorandum, 2022-ACM motion on, you know, if you're preparing a vacancy, I'll see that.
A second.
Thank you. Here again, a conflict of interest exists for Councilmember Ruffridge. He will abstain from speaking to or voting on the Action Memorandum. Report from the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in front of you, you have the procedures that we have recommended for filling the vacancy. And these are based on procedures that we've followed in the past. And so basically, we will be, as of tonight, we will have a vacancy, and we will start advertising immediately to fill the vacancy. And we're looking at, based on this action memo, we are looking at potentially filling this vacancy by Jan, by January 11th, and we'll have a two-week vacancy, or application period. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. I think what we need right now would be a motion to accept the resignation of Councilmember Justin Ruffridge, declare Seat F to be vacant effective upon acceptance of the resignation, direct the City Clerk to advertise the vacancy, and proceed with the steps necessary in order to fill the vacancy, and set a date to appoint a qualified person to fill that vacancy. My suggestion on that is because of the holidays, the advertising should go on, and we can have those applications and do interviews at the January 11th meeting. So if we could have a motion to accept those items I just mentioned.
The motion on the floor is to accept this action.
Okay. All right. Then we have, a motion. I'm losing track of things. May I have a motion to approve this action memorandum?
So.
May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Chilton. Any discussion? Mr. Carey?
I know I told him not to do it, but it's only because the people of Juneau are gonna get his great wisdom and diligence, and we're gonna lose it to some extent. But I absolutely support this.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor Parker?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So, so if I voted no, then I guess I'd have to go to the mayor for tie break because, or it would be defeated, and we would not be accepting Justin's resignation and having to fill the vacancy. And he could do, do City Council and State Legislature. But anyway, thank again, Justin, for your, for your service, and we'll see you in Juneau. And I look forward, I think we will get a lot of qualified folks that will apply. I don't know that they can fill your shoes, but we'll get a lot of qualified people.
Any other comments? Saying none, we'll call for the vote.
Reluctantly, yes.
Hutchings?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Chilton?
Yes.
You have four yes votes.
The Action Memorandum has passed on a 4-0 vote with one absent and one abstaining. And I may have misstated the results of the earlier resolution. It should have been 4-0 and not 5-0. Moving on to the next item, Mayor Council Reports. Mayor's report, well, the snow removal, we had quite a snowfall, and we're still getting more. And I think the, the city crews have done a fantastic job. I know there's some that think there's too many burms around, but with that amount of snow, it just happens. We're gonna have to, to live with that until we can get the snow removed. And it's gonna take a while. I expect four or five days before they can get everything moved and out of the streets and sidewalks clear again fully. Hopefully that'll happen, and we don't get dumped on too much today or tonight. They're predicting some more snow, so. It seems to be a tough year for snow. Back to the old days. Something to think about for the future, I think we need, after leaving the sports center today, I think we should move the, the traffic signal idea at the sports center to a top priority for the next coming year, with the construction that would be starting out there at the fieldhouse, and traffic that would be going back and forth or into and out of there in the coming years. I think that, that traffic signals needs to be a high priority. It's just getting too dangerous, and especially today, where there's low visibility with all the snowburms and everything else. So, that would be a suggestion to administration. The, and I'm just wondering, after some of the resolutions we've passed on ARPA funds, is what, how much is still left in the ARPA funds? If we can get a report on that, so we know what's, if somebody already knows right off the top of their head. See everybody looking at different paper.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. So I was just gonna calculate, based on the actions taken tonight.
I can, yep, while you're doing some math, I will quickly find the, the page for that, but it'll be page 10 where my notes are. So, the ARPA funds were actually appropriated through two different ordinances. The bulk of it in one, and then I think it was about $3,000 and change, and a, and a second ordinance that was reallocated, and the city received a portion of that. The total of those two is $1,142,194.29. Of that total, council authorized through a resolution the use of up to $150,000 towards grant writing assistance and a, and a grant consultant to try and capture additional funds through various federal and state opportunities. That $150,000 authorization, of that $150,000 authorization from council, we initiated a purchase order with our grant consultant for $70,000. So of that, of all the $1.14 million, $70,000 is encumbered, of which we've only spent, actually spent $4,000. So of the entirety of the ARPA funds, we're about $4,000 in expenditures so far.
And thank you, Mayor. I'll just add on to that. So with, with the total amount authorized for the grant writing contract, which we may utilize over the next several years, with the $220,000 approved tonight for the fieldhouse design, and with, should the council approve the matching portion of the Arts and Culture Master Plan, we had, in legislation that's not yet approved, asked for $20,000 match for that funding, there would be approximately $760,000 left of ARPA funding that, that hasn't been allocated to any particular project or program. So, as Kyle mentioned, very little of the money has been spent, but I would say at this point, approximately $760,000 has not been identified or, or targeted yet for any particular use.
And that expires, is it 2024?
That's correct. December, last day of December 2024.
So we've got two years. Okay, good. Thank you. And my last comment again is, Mr. Ruffridge, thank you for all your years of service here. You are going to be missed, and please keep in touch with us, and I'm sure we will be keeping in touch with you. So, moving on to the next one is council reports on boards and commissions. Library Advisory Board, Mr. Carey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm so extremely fortunate. As everyone knows, planning and zoning, each of us have two months on it throughout the year, so that we get to deal with that. And last month, I got to be there, as well as this month, and got to do as they planned for the next couple of years in terms of the downtown section. They went through everything. It was a wonderful meeting, and they're gonna come here and talk to us. This time, for this month, the library board, I had their quarterly meeting, and we met for three hours. It was wonderful. The only confusion was they were not accustomed to meeting in the library. And so that, again, we had a few people that showed up here, and so we waited a little bit. But it was a beautiful day, and we were in the conference room. We got to watch all the people for three hours come in and out. That library is such a heart in this community. The amount of people that come in and out, and particularly once you hit school getting out. We went through, again, a wonderful process. Librarian Nash is awesome in terms of leading groups and the process she used, and so we were very active for that two and a half hours. Everyone participating, we had a member of the public participating, and basically looked at what are the opportunities, what are the things that we need to be doing. And there's gonna be a presentation, I believe, made to the council from that board. And so I don't wanna steal their thunder at all, but I just wanna say both planning and zoning, as well as the library people, are doing a great job. And the information that they're gonna provide to us, I think people will be very pleased with.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Seeing that I'm getting old and forgetful, I forgot a couple of things under my comments, so I will add them in there. Today at the Chamber of Commerce, the city received an award for a community partner at platinum level, and that was presented to us at the Chamber of Commerce meeting this afternoon. Also, our city manager, Ms. Stephanie Queen, received an award also there, and for another job well done over the years. I can't remember the exact name of it, maybe you can remind me.
Excellence in profession.
That was, that was only the, oh, yep.
Excellence in profession.
And she also received an award at AML as the, was it Outstanding Upcoming Leader of the Year, or something like that? I can't remember the exact terminology for it. That's what happens when you get old, you forget these things. But there again, another well-deserved award. She didn't bring him to display tonight, but good job, and we really appreciate everything you've done, not only for our city, but the state, and the municipal league, and the City of Saldana, the Chamber of Commerce and everything else. Congratulations. And the last note that been passed along to me to remind me of things, it's better than that ruler that I usually have and poke me in the ribs, but we need a volunteer from the council for the Parks and Rec Board. I don't see anybody jumping up and signing the paperwork or anything else. So keep, Mr. Chilton, you wanna do that?
Sure.
Okay. Well, we have a volunteer then. Mr., starting January. Thank you very much. Okay. I think I'm done. Got any more notes for me here?
Not yet.
Okay, not yet. Well, that's encouraging. So, next report is the Kina River Special Management Area Board, Mr. Carmichael.
Good evening. Had a Kina River's poor special management area meeting last Thursday. The one thing that came out of that meeting was a letter, a resolution, resolution from the board discussing the board's position on Kina Peninsula Borough Ordinance 2022-36 related to gravel pits and open pits. So, within that letter that was approved to move forward toward the borough, it identified some areas of concern with, with respect to the Charisma Board. Section 2129, 029 allows applicant to get a counter permit without public notice for parcels up to 10 acres, which means they could get a gravel pit up 10 acres running just with, stop in and get the permit. The board opposes that amount as being too large, and believes that two and one half acres would be more appropriate for the counter permits. And with relation to groundwater, and considering handling of groundwater on sites, the regulation should include surface water and surface water drainage, as well as underground water levels monitoring. So, that was a recommended alteration. Treatment of existing pits, the board is concerned about exempting existing pits, and recommends that the board, the borough undertake active management of these pits to ensure the owners implement precautions and save best management practices. Understanding is the state does not have the resources, so they're looking to the borough to possibly fund those for the pits on the peninsula. Buffer zones, Charisma Board believes the proposed 32-foot buffer from the edge of applicant's property to adjacent property should be increased from the 32 feet to 100 feet. In addition, Charisma Board specifically recommends a buffer 1,000 feet from any existing developed facility within the Charisma. A developed facility means any campground, boat launch, parking facility, signage, access roads developed or built by state parks, a distance will be, distance will be better, alleviate dust and noise with those areas that could affect the, the operations. Hours of operations for the pit and processing plants, it's, the board's position is that the hours of operation should be limited to 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, six days a week, no work on Sundays for the quiet day. And then it recommends, request necessary monitoring for the research. Charisma Board recommends sufficient budget be allocated for supervision of newly permitted and existing pits. Moreover, the Charisma Board recommends a thorough fund necessarily scientific research to better access the groundwater flows and potential solutions to prevent subsurface water pollution from entering the river. Fairly succinct, not my character normally, but that's where the river is. So, that's, that's the, the remainder was kind of, everybody just kinda given up to date since the last meeting, nothing really phenomenal or notable in that, other than, as always, the water quality reports moving forward. And then, in terms of those that are required by EPA and everything else, are also processed and getting ready to start on 2023 to be reserved. So, if you have any questions, I might be able to answer, or not sure.
I do have one, Mr. Carmichael. Having sat on the Borough Planning Commission, gravel pits were very controversial, and continue to be very controversial. And I believe they had that ordinance up for a public hearing, or at least approval, last night. Do you know if anything changed on that?
I do not. I don't know. I think it was altered, I think.
Ms. Hutchings?
So I was-
So I was at the borough assembly meeting last night and they did bring up the material work site. They talked about the fact that they have been having work groups. They have postponed the hearing until March 14th, I believe, and they are still working with different entities waiting for some reports to come back from the state to do with water tables and whatever. So I'm sure that, and I'm sure that you turned that into the work study group. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, this is for the assembly, I believe.
So anyway, March 14th for public comment.
Mr. Carey.
Gravel pits will only be an issue for 50 years. The borough's only been addressing it for 55 years. If indeed they're, and I'm, they're smart, they're gonna postpone it for at least three more months. If they do decide that they're gonna monitor since the state doesn't have the resources to do it, they better get a police force. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, moving on to the next item, oh, yeah, next item on the agenda is city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney. I had intended to bring in update on our snow hauling budget, but it would not be worth us compiling those numbers as we wait for the new numbers to come in. But I'm happy to answer questions and I've been trying to communicate with the council and the public to give updates about how we're proceeding with that. I will let you know, we're fully staffed. Last I heard, the equipment is all deployed and functional and we're not throttling our service due to budget concerns. So I will expect to bring forward a potential budget adjustment to the council, but we were not slowing things down in, out of concern for the budget. So I wanted to to share that. And also thanks to council because if you recall, in this current fiscal year, the council added additional budget for snow hauling and an additional part-time person. So we've got those resources available in a time of great need. Unfortunately, it's just not gonna be quite enough. So I'll come back with some more information on that. Last Friday, the Alaska Municipal Bond Bank had their board of directors meeting and this is where they review all the projects and evaluate the credit worthiness of the entities seeking the debt. And Melanie and Kyle and I attended that meeting virtually. I think we were the third on the list of the projects and it was a very quick approval. There were no questions for us. So with that official approval, we will bring forward a resolution at your next meeting, formally authorizing me to execute the documents for the bond issuance, which we believe will happen in January. Don't have a date certain, but they'll make that determination based on when they think it's most advantageous. So we'll bring forth that legislation at your December 28th meeting for your consideration. Two more quick things. The Riverfront Redevelopment Project, we, this is a grant funded project to look at our downtown and have a more thriving, working partnering with local landowners to have a more thriving downtown supportive of local businesses. That work's been ongoing, but the very first very public kickoff meetings are coming up. So I wanna share, just so it's on people's radars, January 11th and January 12th, there will be opportunities both at a chamber luncheon, here at the city council, and then at a public open house. And we now have a website, soldotnariverfront.org, where people can follow along with that project. You can sign up to get updates. We'll be updating that that website periodically, soldotnariverfront.org. So we're, we've been doing a lot of work behind the scenes. Mr. Zarneski is managing this project and excited to finally bring the public into the conversation in a much broader way. So encourage people, if you know, that are interested in that topic, to to try and attend one of those events. Finally, just a quick note, we usually have the auditors present the results of the city audit in December. It's looking like it's gonna be January this year, not through a fault of our teams or the the conducting auditors, but a new GASB rule. GASB 87 is a new rule that requires municipalities to account for leasehold properties differently than we have in the past. You might think we have very few leased properties, but once you consider the airport, we actually have quite a few. So it's just a new accounting rule and I anticipate trying to schedule that audit presentation in January. Just wanted to give you a little heads up because that's not typical in terms of timeline. That concludes my report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Probably gonna blame that on snow. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Public comments. Members of the public will have three minutes to comment. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App used by pressing the raise your hand button and phone participants by dialing star nine on your telephone. Is there anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on anything? Please state your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
My name's David Heg. About Funny River Road, and I really am not gonna add anything else, just thought I'd take this opportunity to hand in my paperwork. And again, remind you that this is something you should take notice of and it's gonna continue to grow. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on any item? Seeing none, I'll take a look at Zoom and I see no hands raised in Zoom. So we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, council comments. Ms. Hutchings.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the friends of the library. They had a great bake sale and gifts that they auctioned or sold and had silent auctions on. So Barb Olson and Michelle Blackwell did a great job and Barbara Jewell. And then there was music by Sammy Crawford and Cheryl Miller, so it was really a nice get together for everybody and they pretty much sold everything out. So that'll be more money for the library. I went to AML last week and I was giving, given about five minutes notice that Stephanie was getting an award, so I kind of just gave a real short speech because I understand Mr. Whitney was supposed to be there and he did not send me his speech to put out for everybody. There were great breakout sessions at the, at AML and I'm sorry that more of us didn't attend, but it was really good and the connections were great. Last night, I was at the borough assembly meeting and we had a large agenda, but most everything got put on the consent agenda, which made things really nice. Jesse Bjorkman, of course, his resignation was accepted and they will be filling that seat. I believe his last day is January 14th or 15th, something like that. And the big thing, of course, was a material work site, but they went ahead and, as I said, put it off till March 14th so they could work some more on it. And I think that's about it, except for thanks for the snow people because they are sure taking care of things. I think the one thing that I really wanna commend them on is the sidewalks. People are able to walk on the sidewalks through town, which is incredible. So thank you.
Mr. Chilson.
Thank you. I also wanted to echo my appreciation of our streets department, their work dealing with the snowpocalypse this last week. I'm not sure if the city has any kind of budget for employee appreciation or special awards or things as they come up, but I hope you guys buy them lunch or do something special for that crew because they deserve it. And then also, as Mayor Whitney mentioned earlier, our manager Stephanie Queen did receive the award for excellence in profession today and it was really cool to be able there, to be able to be there as part of the audience and just listen, listen and list off all the different accomplishments you've done for our city. I think that still falls quite short of all that you actually have done. So very well done. And the only other thing I'd add is what took them so long, so.
Mr. Carey.
Copying, handing out a copy of the minutes of the Saldana City Council on December 18th, 1969. Fifty-three years ago. And again, sometimes it's good to kinda have a look back in terms of seeing what the city was doing and, and again, they were dealing with the idea of putting lights in Saldana and whether or not from the why there should be any lights moving up. And it was quite a discussion. And again, the idea of recreational project in terms of what's now a centennial, they were looking at that 60-acre area and what should maybe be done with that? Maybe it should be, again, a picnic shelter. They were talking about having water in sewer. And again, what to do and they talked about the lagoon operations in interior Alaska. And, and I particularly liked the fact that they had done a bond issue and it was to get a new public service building. And the entire cost of the entire bond to purchase that was $39,000 for the entire thing. And again, and it was approved, it wasn't even a closed vote. And again, they also were involved with municipal league and again, talking about how much cost per month, they were willing to authorize employees with. And again, it was interesting that the cost per person, group insurance, $7.93 a month. There was real concern whether or not the city could afford to spend that much money. And again, just who would be allowed and which employees. And the other thing which I really enjoyed, I have to say, is I was sworn in as a student member of the Saldana City Council on that date. And so again, 53 years watching things change and in some ways they, they really don't. We just grow and I really like the idea that people who have served on this council as a student member have the opportunity to come back and maybe become a member of the council itself. I think that's a, a real good feeder program that we do. And again, I, I very much hope with this open spot that we will look and find people who have, who've been a part of the city and do a lot of things and hopefully that want to be on the council. But again, it was fun looking through this from 53 years ago when I first got on this council. And yeah, I hope that you maybe enjoyed looking at this and some of the things that nothing's new under the sun when it comes to government. Thank you.
Actually, kinda interesting here, there was a James Nordeil that lived in Fairbanks, was quite active in that community. I don't know if it's any relation or it's the same person. Thank you. Vice Mayor Parker.
Thank you, Mayor Whitney, and I wanna welcome our new city clerk to her first, first city council meeting. It's nice, nice to have you, Clerk Blankenship. Stephanie, congratulations for both your chamber and your AML award. You, you are a rock star and you have served the city of Saldana, the residents exemplary in the time that you've been with the city. So we, we have been blessed to, to have you there. And I do appreciate the snow updates that you've been sending out and I know it's a challenge, but you guys got a good crew that's, that's taking care of things. Councilmember Ruffridge, we'll see you in Juneau and hopefully periodically you can call into a council meeting and give us legislative updates. Wish everybody a happy holiday and be safe out there. That's all.
And we say the last, the best for the last, Mr. Ruffridge.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, that's an odd experience to not be able to speak on resolutions with your name in it. So just, you guys are very kind and very generous to me and I appreciate that. I, I will speak on, on some of the city issues for a second. I have to say, I was in town for the Saldana version of snowpocalypse. I don't remember seeing that much snow in a very long time and I would like to just say a well done job to our city snow removal crew. I have been traveling quite a bit of late and in and out of Anchorage for the last couple of weeks and they, they obviously have many more roads to take care of in the Anchorage area, but I feel like maybe they need to travel down and look at our Saldana roads a time or two because we, we do a top notch job. So well done to the crew. And, you know, I really would like to thank the members of the council and those that I've had the, the pleasure of serving with over the last few years. It's truly been a great experience. I feel like we are an example of support and kindness, civil discourse. And I really appreciate the kindness that you guys have shown to me this evening and throughout the last few years. I have felt this has been an excellent experience and a good education in, in how the public process works. Yeah, to Mr. Carey, you are not gonna get rid of me that easy. I will obviously be working with you all in, in a different capacity and I will, I look forward to joining further city council meetings. I have not removed the calendar reminder from my phone. It is going on in perpetuity, so I will, I will have that as, as a reminder going forward. And then to Mrs. Queen, obviously a huge congratulations on a well earned multiple awards for excellence all around in your profession. I think you've heard that from all of us at, at many points throughout your time with us. And I do regret that I wasn't able to be at the chamber meeting today. Certainly hope somebody got a picture of a surprised face. Hopefully you were surprised and maybe they can send, send that in an email or something. And thank, thank each of you and apologies for not being able to be there today. I did wanna attend in person, but had, had to be out and about and doing some training up in Anchorage today and tomorrow. So appreciate each of you and if I don't see you before Christmas, have a Merry Christmas and appreciate all that you've done and I look forward to working again soon.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, executive session, there is no reason for one. Pending legislation, ordinance 2022-035, amending Saldana Municipal Code Title 17 to establish standards for use of accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals, introduced by Mr. Chilson, and the public hearing is scheduled for January 11th. Last item on the agenda is meeting announcements. December 15th, 2022 Airport Commission Meeting, 5:30 PM and December 28th, 2022 City Council Meeting at 6:00 PM. And I would have one question, if the clerk has a Parks and Rec Commission Meeting been rescheduled, the one that they missed?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you. Okay, having nothing further on the agenda, meeting is adjourned.
See you later.
Good night.